This meeting is being recorded.
You have to put your earphones in. One last check. We're trying to make sure we don't have any feedback.
I can hear a little bit.
Test one to three. So we got it.
Good now.
Better.
Okay, Mayor Hollitt, I believe we're ready to start the special session.
All right, thank you. Okay, call this meeting to order June 28 at 17:09. And first thing we're going to do is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. All right, we have Jackie to do the roll call.
She has a sheet, I'll do it. Do you have a sheet, Jackie, and I can do roll call? Counselor Hooker?
I'm here.
Counselor Bjornson?
Here.
Counselor Whitney?
I believe Counselor Whitney said she wouldn't make it tonight.
Okay, Counselor Kenyon?
Here.
Mayor Hollitt?
Here.
Counselor Coker?
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff? Counselor Spleedoff? We, yeah, we don't, don't hear you, Counselor Spleedoff.
About now.
Yep, now we do.
Okay, good.
Everybody's here except for Counselor Whitney.
So the first order of business is going to be public comment. Do we have anyone there at City Hall for public comment?
Yes, I have Gary Carl here with public comment.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Gary.
My public comment is really a question. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I have not seen any notice of this meeting, and I'm wondering whether notice was given or if this is a secret meeting without notice.
How did you find out about it?
Linda told me. I don't know how she found out, but I looked for notice and I didn't find any notice. Where did you, where did you, where did you publish? Where was it noticed? Is it in the press? Was it on, was it on the city website?
Our city policy is that it be noticed at the post office and at the city kiosk, and that's been the policy for a number of years, even when you were a counselor.
So was that done, is what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yes, that was done? Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
George, public comment? No, they're probably comment at City Hall, Mayor.
Thank you. Next person, let's go, hearing no more inside City Hall, let's go to the Zoom. If you're in the public on the Zoom, go ahead and raise your hand icon, and I will call on you. If you're unable to find that, go ahead and unmute yourself. And the first person I see with the hand raised is Mr. Dan Barclay. Please state your name and address.
Dan Barclay, 47501. And in addition to the notification requirements, which I didn't personally see the post office or City Hall, but I assume that's, I mean, that's pretty standard, that's normally done. But the meeting was noticed at least yesterday, if not the day before, on the city website. So the information's been readily available to anybody that was looking for it. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public? Either inside City Hall or on the Zoom. All right, I don't see anyone on the Zoom. So first thing on the agenda is we have an application on file now from the Herald.
You muted, Mayor.
Thank you. So the first thing we have on our agenda is we have an application turned in. I am sorry, I see a counselor hand up. Go ahead, Counselor.
I'll let you finish. It's about what you're talking about.
Okay, so the first thing that we have, we're going to be discussing in special session today, is our application that was just submitted, I believe, yesterday by the Herald to be recognized as media. Thank you for putting that up on the screen, Chief Martin. And we're going to discuss this application. And we have our attorney here present to give us a recommendation. And then, Chief, would you happen to have our city policy also available that we're following? Available to pull up if we need that next? Thank you.
Can we maybe slowly scroll through this so that we can see it? I didn't get a copy of this ahead of time.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, well, did this go out to counselors? I don't believe I saw it. I knew that it was coming.
I apologize, Counsel. That's part my fault. I was, I've been tied up on a death investigation since last week, so I've been doing police work up until this afternoon late, and we got a lot of the documents out to you just a little bit ago. Bob, Jackie, pull it up. That should, if it's not in your, if that's not in your email, it is on the website.
What does that say? Please see DOT or DQT opinion or DOG, DOJ? Thank you. Yes, so that's actually the Attorney General's opinion that we looked at, that he's referring to there. Not sure it's, if that's the same as the DOJ.
Is, is there any more on the bottom of this page or?
And Chief, you're muted too.
Yeah, to clarify, that is DOJ in that spot you were noting, Mayor Hollitt.
Okay, is that the same as the Attorney General? Because what I read was the Attorney General. I think it did have that same date.
Yes, I believe so, that the Oregon Department of Justice is part of the Attorney General's office.
Thank you. Are you able to share that screen again with us? It went away.
You want the council rules first, or do you want the application first?
Let's go ahead and look again just at that application real quick. And counselors, if you have any questions, take notes on that application.
It's not up for me.
Yeah, it's not me either.
Yes, staff's working on pulling it back up. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Yes. Is there any more at the bottom of the page?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Has everybody had enough time to look at that?
I have.
Yes, okay. Let's go ahead and go refer back to the council policy.
Here, switching over that here just a second. I think it's 12 or 13. It's one before, one after, what it actually shows on the screen. There it is. So that's the start right there.
Okay, scroll up just a little bit to where item number B is at the top.
Okay, too far.
Perfect. B is in boy at the top if you can. That way we can see it all.
I think we'll have to scroll back and forth some because it seems to jump a little far.
Oh, okay, let's leave it right there then. Perfect, right there. Perfect.
And then, Mayor, how do you want to proceed from here? Do you want Matt to start going over?
Yeah, counselors, go ahead and keep reading through if you need to, but we'll let Matt give his opinion for us. Go ahead, Matt.
I'm happy to jump in some direction specifically on what opinion or what the question is that you'd like an opinion on.
Counselors, do you have any questions for him specifically? So I'll just go ahead and state that, so I believe when I read the ORS, it's a little more strict for Oregon ORS. However, our own City of Oak Ridge Council rules basically refers to the Attorney General's opinion from 2016. And in reading through that opinion, it is very, very open to bloggers or, quite honestly, anybody that wants to call themselves media can be considered media. Matt, do you have some more opinions on what would be considered media?
Yeah, I, like you said, Mayor, the Attorney General's opinion is pretty broad on what falls under representative of the news media and representative of the news media is what ORS 192.660 subsection four is saying. Who is allowed to attend executive sessions, representatives of the news media? That Attorney General opinion makes a point to say that those who are part of other technologies, including websites, blogs, as long as, as well as institutional papers, you know, members of the Associated Press all qualify as news representatives. So I'm happy to elaborate on that. I think my general direction would be that those entities, organizations, websites, blogs, who regularly report on issues of what the public body is undertaking are typically considered in Oregon to be news representatives.
So I have a question because of the rules and the media is bringing up here because of the rest rules. Can the council? Is this supposed to be talked about at the next regular meeting? And if so, can the council suspend the rules to talk about it in this special session?
The problem is we would have to withhold from having any executive sessions until we make a decision today.
Yes.
So it makes more sense.
I believe, I believe the council's done it in the past where they suspend the rules. And I think you have to vote twice then, once to defend, suspend the rules, and then one to go forth. So I believe that would be a decision from the council.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, do we have an agenda for tonight? And was this topic on the agenda? I'm not sure why we would need to suspend rules.
Because this is not a regular meeting, and it says in your rules that it'll be talked about at a regular meeting.
Oh, okay. And do we have any? Do we have any executive schedule, executive sessions scheduled before our next regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Today, really, so they turned in the application to follow the rules according to the council rules. They turned in the application yesterday. So then we would need to make a decision by our first regularly scheduled council meeting, which is July 7, I believe. So today, Matt is here to give us an opinion on his interpretation. So I guess that would be correct, that we could wait and decide on the 7th and still continue to have our executive, if we have an executive session between now and Thursday.
We would need to, we would need to postpone executive sessions the way this is written.
No, because today's a special session, not a regular session.
I know, but it says to see when a complete application for recognition as news media is pending. The City Council will delay any scheduled executive session meetings until the motion on the application is made by the City Council.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
So I believe I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Bjornson. Discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff. Did you have discussion or questions?
Yes, I think that it's in the best interest of the council to be upfront and forth with to the members in of the council and the city to suspend the rules as for this is getting to be a little thing up, and we need to get this taken care of as soon as possible instead of waiting. Otherwise, it's going to postpone all of our executive meetings for, until our next meeting. And I don't think we have time to do that. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, does any other council have any discussion? So my concern, just to be really transparent, is I, unfortunately, it, well, unfortunate or unfortunately, the way our council rules read to me, I feel like we really need to follow the Attorney General's recommendation.
Mayor?
Yes.
The motion on the floor is whether or not to suspend the rules that we have?
Yeah.
So are you commenting on a future motion?
No, I'm not understanding why we need to suspend the rules and not continue the discussion today.
So, so if I could do a quick?
Sure.
The council has somebody's.
Maybe Jackie's computer needs to mute before you can talk.
You muted now? Okay. All right, sorry. So the council can, these are council rules. You can suspend the rules. I believe you have to do a vote to suspend the rules and then a vote to do whatever rule you're going to talk about is. So my opinion is there's, there's two choices here. Is to suspend the rules and talk about the application from the Highway 58 Herald in this meeting. And then decide what you're going to do, or two, postpone until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. But then you could not have an executive session until after that was decided at that meeting because you have not necessarily rules that contradict each other, but in this situation, there's the rules contradict each other because you can't, you have to choose one or the other. And if I wasn't clear on that, one is suspend the rules, decide to talk about the Highway 58 Herald application this evening, and then go forward from there, or not suspend the rules and wait till the next scheduled regular council meeting to do Highway 58 application.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Is there any more discussion? Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Highway 58 Herald to be recognized by the council as media. I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Bjornson. Discussion? I would like to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Custer or Mr. Carl?
Mayor, who's seconded?
Counselor Bjornson. So, Mr. Custer, I noticed on the application that it says that you're chief editor, and I'm curious how many people you have in your establishment and how many people have backgrounds in journalism or journalistic ethics or code of conduct?
Anywhere from one to 20, and I don't care to answer the second part of that question.
You don't care to answer if anybody's had any training in ethics or code of?
No, I do not.
Okay.
And that is my right.
And same question for Mr. Gary.
Next you're going to be asking for what size shirt they wear.
And can I ask the same question to Gary Carl?
Would you repeat the question, please?
Gary, I asked if there's anyone at the Herald for the Oak Ridge location that has any background in journalism or any training in ethics and code of conduct?
Yes.
And that I'm really getting at, you know, the rules that we're supposed to follow for executive sessions. I'm sure you know what I'm getting at.
We're having technical problems here. George, shut your, shut that down. Okay. To answer your question, Mayor Hollitt, the answer is yes.
Okay, and so my question was, how many people? Well, I guess I'm just curious if you could elaborate.
I cannot elaborate. I know that some have a specific background in journalism. Myself, for example, I have a degree in journalism from Pennsylvania State University. But I can't answer for any, any of the other contributors to the paper, for example, Gwen DeJoy, I know she has a master, does she have a master's degree, but not in journalism?
What was the name?
Gwen DeJoy.
Oh, does she write stories for Oak Ridge?
She writes for the Herald, yeah.
For Oak Ridge stories?
I'm sorry, for what?
For stories pertaining to Oak Ridge. I realize that you have more writers that write for other areas on the Highway 58.
Gwen, Gwen DeJoy, you don't know Gwen DeJoy? That's Lori Patty's daughter. She grew up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do know Gwen. I didn't recognize the last name. Thank you.
Yeah, Gwen, Gwen writes for the paper. Ben, what's Ben's last name? Ben Olson writes for the paper. Edwin Way writes for the paper. He's a former physician assistant here in Oak Ridge. As I said, I write for the paper. George writes for the paper. I think, I think the question is really, you could ask your attorney, but I think that governing bodies such as yourselves are bound by the statutory requirement to admit representatives of the media to executive sessions, and to the extent that enforcing a policy would result in the exclusion of a person statutorily entitled, statutorily entitled, not academically entitled, statutorily entitled to attend an executive session, the policy is inconsistent with ORS 192.660 sub four. And I'm sure your attorney will bear that out. In evaluating allegations that an individual was wrongly excluded from executive session, the commission, that's the Ethics Commission, that investigates these matters, must assess compliance with the statute regardless, regardless of a government body's policies. So regardless of what your city policy is, if it's, if it contravenes ORS 192.6604, you're in violation. And you can ask your attorney what that means when you're in violation, who investigates it, and, and what the consequences of violation are. I'm not going to tell you. You have an attorney.
Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Excuse me, I was coughing a little bit. I just wanted to clarify with either representative of the Herald. Being as how the application that you submitted states Being how the application that you submitted states that we can allow anyone who claims to be from the Herald, the way that I read it. Are you comfortable if we allow someone that we don't recognize as an employee of yours by name? Because obviously we are not going to know everybody that you have on staff and your staff is going to change from time to time. So.
Exactly.
I just want to clarify that if someone shows up and their name is John Doe and we have never heard of them and they claim to be from the Herald. Are you saying that you'll, you'll vouch later that they were okay to come in?
I will vouch for, I will vouch for anybody who's a bona fide agent, agent of the Herald. They say they're with the Herald and they're lying. That's not my issue. That's your issue. But if someone walks in and says they want to be in executive session and they represent Highway 58 Herald, then they have a right to be in the meeting. And may I add to that? Go ahead. Adding to that, anyone who is covering for the Herald would be somebody well known to you, not some stranger. It would be either myself or Mr. Custer or yeah, Mr. Zilstra, Rick Zilstra. Probably one of the three of us and you know all of us well. So it wouldn't be Joe Dokes walking off the street. It would be somebody that you know.
I think what she was getting at is it might be a good idea to identify those three people that you just named, Gary. Instead of the application, it says, and others.
Yes, and that can change periodically. And that means I'd have to fill out another application, stop your executive session process in order to have him be accepted or her in regularly scheduled meetings unless you're going to keep putting the rules to the side.
Well, what I'm wondering is if you guys would be willing, if you suspect you have a new employee that not everyone on the council might know or anyone on the council might know is an employee. Could you let us know ahead of time X Y Z person plans to attend your next executive session? So that we know it's safe to allow that person to come in as a representative of the Herald.
Yes, we would do that as a common courtesy regardless.
Okay, great. Wonderful. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Bjarnson.
Yeah, Don, Counselor Kenyon asked my question about how we would know they are a bona fide representative of the Herald. So I appreciate the heads up. But I, if we could, I would like our attorney to go over quickly what the media's role is in executive session, just in case anybody isn't clear on that.
Sure. Well, they're, they're, they don't have a role. An executive session is my easiest answer. They are allowed to attend. And, and my advice to the city of Oak Ridge in the past and to other public entities that I represent is to make a statement at that executive session. And I, I spoke to the mayor about this. Let me pull up the email as well. So I'm quoting it appropriately. But on behalf of my other entities, and I know Oak Ridge has done this in the past, I typically encourage a statement at the start of the executive session along the lines of approved representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. So that's the statement I would typically say. Going into executive session, you know, there might be a notification that we're having an executive session to discuss with the attorney about imminently pending litigation. And so the news media, in my opinion, could report that the Oak Ridge City Council held an executive session to discuss pending litigation. It would be my opinion that any discussion beyond that, that they gained from attending executive session would be an improper disclosure. Media is not allowed to record that. The only recording of executive session would be the official minutes.
Thank you, Matt. And if there is any disclosure outside of executive session, what happens then?
It's a good question. The Attorney General opinion that has been referenced a few times tonight. Interestingly, went out of their way to say that if there is an improper violation of executive session disclosures, that alone is not grounds to remove someone moving forward. So I think cities across the state of Oregon would disagree with that. And what this city may do in light of a disclosure, I would say would be something I'd want to talk to the council about probably in the executive session because it would really depend on what harm the city faced. Right? Any, any sort of action often, you know, you need, you need harm or damages. So there would be a discussion with me and a, a review of, of whatever happened with the city council to decide what we wanted to do next.
Thank you, Matt.
Go ahead, Counselor Hooker.
Yeah, I just have one question. Would it be? I mean, they want to be as cordial as they can. Would it be possible to get a list of employees that work for that paper? And then it doesn't take but just a minute to, if someone is gone and someone or someone leaves and someone is hired or comes in to just email just the name. So we would know without having to ask or without having to assume. That's all my question.
The Herald has no employees other than office staff. Everybody is volunteer and they come and go pretty regularly. As I said, we once we are alerted by the city, there is an executive session pending. As we have been, we would notify the council or the city, who the representative is going to be.
Does that mean there's going to be one representative to attend or you'll notify us each time if someone's coming?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Hooker, did you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Are you thinking me have just answered it? Is there? What I was curious about is you could put your, I don't know who the lead down to Herald is, but could the paperwork should go through your office first. And you could put your Sean Henry on it and say, yes, this person is a part of our media group. That'd be, that'd clarify everything where you preauthorize it. And then everything would be okay. We wouldn't have to question. We wouldn't have to have a list of names or anything else is you would say, George, you're in charge and you put your, or Gary Carl, wherever put your signature on there saying this is an approved person on that application. In other words, application before every, every executive mission sessions there, instead of just a heart blanket, one-time approval. You could fill it out and tell us that.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. They'll do that.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor.
I just wondered, George, when the Highway 58 Herald was originally when they originally started, I don't remember if it was an article or a statement that was made in one of our council meetings. But I remember hearing from the Herald that they were not interested in attending our executive sessions. And there was a reason for it. I don't remember what it was, but I'm wondering what's changed, if you can expand on that.
Briefly, I'm the editor and I made a change.
What's that?
I didn't get it on mute and type. In brief, I am the editor and I made that change.
Oh, okay. That's all I have.
So I just have one thing and it's just to tag on to what Kenyon already said was that I do remember when Dean, I, I forgive me, I don't remember his last name, how to pronounce it, but I want to say Ray, Dean Ray. When he was attending, his statement was that he did not attend council meetings because then it, he basically felt, he said that it forfeited his opportunity to report on the issue. So just wanted to ensure that the Herald 58 realizes that when they do attend, it's exactly as the attorney said, it's kind of a forfeiture to report on it other than exactly what the intention of the O R S says.
It's not exactly what your attorney says. It's what the Department of Justice says, and that's what we will go by. Thank you. The, this is Gary Carl. The obligation of, well, the reason for the press, media being present in executive session is so that the media can be informed in a general sense, but also to be a watchdog on, on the council and the executive session. In that you're not allowed to discuss in executive session, things that are outside of the stated purpose of the executive session. And if you do that, then it's the media's obligation to report to the public that you've done so. So it isn't just, you know, the media is not allowed to do this and we're not allowed to do that. It's true that the media should not, and there are two, there are two, as your attorney pointed out, there are two exceptions. One is litigation, pending litigation. Another has to do with personnel issues in a school with children. But generally speaking, the, the press should not be reporting outside of what goes on in executive session. That's not the purpose. But it is the purpose for the press to be well informed of what's going on in a general sense and to be a watchdog to make sure that you don't exceed the stated purpose of your executive session. If you do, then, then you can expect the press will report that. And rightly so. That's what they're supposed to do. Right, Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Gary. I would agree with that. Mostly. Counselor Hooker?
Yeah, one last thing, and I remember reading in the paper at one time that George is also president of the paper. And I was just wondering if he should actually add that as editor in chief. Have both of them on there.
Not required. What difference does that make? That could be the president of the pool on us too, but that has another on the media's. I know. I could say that. If I was.
Counselors, is there any more questions? Any more discussion? All right, let's call for the vote. Go ahead, Jackie.
Mayor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff. Counselor Bjarnson.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carried. Next order of business is we have a quick executive session to get into. We will not be coming back out into public session. However, we will be coming back out into our budget hearing that should be starting at 6:00 P M.
Oh, Mayor Hollitt?
Yes.
I do have the, the addition of the Coburg I G A.
Oh.
It's an addition.
Okay. I forgot about that. Let's go ahead and do that first. That's really important.
You muted, Kevin.
Staff is going to be bringing it up. What I have before you is, because we are so short-staffed, Coburg, we worked on an I G A with the city of Coburg to provide extra police services for us. And it's basically a I G A between the two governments, the city of Coburg and the city of Oak Ridge to provide some extra police coverage for us, to not exceed five weeks commencing June 24th, 2022, even though we have not used anything yet, and terminating July 29th, 2022. That'll basically, what it'll be is to give us a break because we're so short-staffed until we get our two new people on and they're still in process, almost done, but still in process. So we foresee anywhere from two to four weeks before we get those people on. So we have requesting an I G A with the city of Coburg. Not, not to exceed July 29th, if so, we can extend it, but I don't believe we will need to. And Jackie has that on the screen for you. And the meat and potatoes of it is, is some it's an hourly rate of 73.30 per hour for their services. Our intent is to where have them work some shifts to give Oak Ridge PD staff a break in the upcoming weeks. And I don't have a motion before you, but basically a motion to accept the I G A or not to accept the I G A. And to note, last page, the city administrator for Coburg has already signed. Actually, signed today. And again, that would be between the city of Oak Ridge and the Coburg for 73.30 an hour police services. That's their loaded cost for this service.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
That we accept the I G A proposed by the city of Coburg for the city of Oak Ridge.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Spleedoff and seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any discussion?
I wondered if we could scroll up and see, was there a recommended motion on this?
There, there was not a recommended motion, just a for and against for.
Okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Coker.
Chief Martin, I have a question. Will they be using, bringing their vehicles or will they be using our vehicles?
I believe they'll be using their vehicles.
Okay, and that 73.30 includes their gas and their time?
They've only requested the 73.30. So I believe there's a section about if one of their cars breaks down.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes, I'd like to find out, is that 73.30 from Coburg to here and back? Or is it when they arrive at Oak Ridge?
No, the seven, the 73.30 is the officers, that's their loaded cost for officer wages. So that's how much their officers will be earning per hour that they work.
Okay, so the time starts when they get here?
No, I believe the time start would be from whatever their workstation is when they left.
Okay, so we're paying them for two hours of travel.
Yes.
Basically. For two and a half hours.
Sounds standard.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I'd like to know if we could have a copy of this email to us so we can actually read it in full or, or slowly go through it.
Thought I had sent that probably an hour ago.
Oh. Uh, no.
And if I did not, it is online on the city website. And to note, and to note, it was approved both by the city attorneys of Coburg and our city attorney.
Okay. Never mind. I'll find it on the city website.
Hey, Counselor Kenyon, as soon as I'm, have time, I will send it to you.
Thank you.
As soon as the meeting's over tonight, I'll send it to you if I haven't yet.
Thank you. All right, can we call for the vote? Are we ready for that? Sorry, guys, we're just kind of pressed for time here tonight. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Coker.
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt.
Aye. Thank you, chief, for taking care of that.
Thank you.
All right, let's do a quick public comment. Is there any comment inside, uh, City Hall?
Public comment, fellas? Anything?
Nope, no public comment there. No public comment at City Hall, chief?
Oh, sorry, no, no ma'am.
Okay, um, in the Zoom room, Dan Barclay, go ahead.
Yeah, and I do apologize because I know you all are pressed for time, but I'll make this quick. In the, uh, legal advice from the city attorney, he mentioned the term designated representative. And I think whether, whether it's, you know, a roster or, you know, prior to each meeting that, that the, uh, Harold, uh, provide counsel, you know, who the designated representative is. I think, I think it matters that somebody take the time to, uh, designate their representative. But my question, and on tonight's meeting, there was, uh, let me pull that up. There was, as I understood the chain of events, at the June 23rd work session, special session, there was an executive session, 192 dot 660 period two, period A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. And that executive session was canceled and postponed, uh, pending an outcome on the, uh, Highway 58 Herald being, you know, designated as media, which I think council took the appropriate action. But tonight, the executive session is to discuss media that was already done in special session. So should we assume that the executive session you're getting ready to go into was for the, the one that wasn't done on the 23rd under 192 6602 Alpha? To consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent? Cause it's listed as to discuss media. That's already been done, as it should be in, in the special session. So just, uh, you know, trying to connect the dots here, I guess.
I'm not sure if there's a different, um, agenda, but the agenda I have, I pulled off the city's website and under number five, it says executive session 192 dot 660. Regarding, um, employment, not the media. Is there two different ones posted?
One I pulled up for tonight's meeting says the executive session, colon, and then to discuss media is what it said.
I'm going to try pulling it up.
Yeah, if you could pull that on the city's website, that would be helpful, Don.
I mean, logically, it would be for the, for the personnel issue, but, uh,
Yeah, it's supposed to be for the personnel. Chief, would you happen to know?
Colleen did that for me because I was busy. She said that was a mistake and that was supposed to be attached to the special session and not the executive session.
Okay.
I was, I was otherwise engaged when that was put out, so.
Okay, so my copy shows the correct executive session.
The numbers are right on the, I believe the numbers are right on the, the agenda?
Yes. Oh, I see what you're saying.
If you want me to read the whole thing, I can read it.
Yeah, we'll read it. Um, yeah, we'll read it, um, right before we go into executive session and then after. So it is the correct ORS. I see what you're saying, Dan. But then underneath that, it says to discuss media.
And, uh, to discuss media is an error.
Yeah. So Matt, are you still online?
Yeah, I'm here.
So, um, I don't know if you followed that, but on our agenda today, we have the correct ORS number and it does, um, list the correct one, but then two sentences down below that, it says to discuss media. Are we still okay to hold our executive session or should we not?
Um, I, I, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure that the subject matter of your executive session. I know we discussed the one for Thursday.
Um.
So if this is a two.
It's not, it's not for the one on Thursday.
Okay, if it is to, to discuss something that fits within 660 subsection two, subsection A, I think there's appropriate notice. I, there's a typo of to discuss media.
Yes.
Assuming the subject matter is permissible for that subsection of the statute, I think appropriate notice has been provided.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is that an executive session that you, that I'm to attend, Mayor?
Um, you, it would, we would be happy if you attended, but you do not have to.
Understood.
Okay, um, so if there's any more public comment, I'm going to look through here. I don't see any. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Barclay.
Mayor?
Yes.
A quick question. Could we look up, um, I'm gonna, I'll try to quickly pull it up. The exact verbiage for period two, period A.
Yeah, Kevin said he has that.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, public, we are going into executive session. We will not be coming back out into public session for the special meeting. Um, we're going to go into an executive session and then after that, we will come back into our budget hearing. Our budget hearing was supposed to start six minutes ago. However, we need to take care of this one item and we will try to do it quickly. So.
Mayor, to clarify, you may, you may have to come out in public session.
Okay, we may or may not. We'll leave it at that. Okay, would you be so kind to read that ORS, um, in full, chief?
Yes. Executive session 192 point 660 subsection two, A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent.
Okay. I'm going to create my room, so it'll take me just a minute. And is the press Herald still there and they want to come in?
Okay.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Give me one.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go in my office and Matt, I want to ask a quick question when we first go in pertaining to something, if it's appropriate or not, and then, uh,
You want to give him a call offline and then come into the meeting?
It'll just take a second. Is that a, okay, Matt? Matt, do you want to call me real fast or do you want to just go into the session?
I think we can go in. If, if we can't talk about it, I'll, I'll tell you, let's not talk about it.
Okay. All right.
So Colleen, is Kevin under Kevin Martin? Is that his office? Oh no, that's his screen there with you. What is his screen named in his office? You're muted.
City admin pro tem, I believe.
Sorry, I'm talking to myself. I didn't realize I was on mute.
I'm not seeing it on the list.
Oh, to be able to come in, you mean?
Yeah, from his office. What's, what's his name for his office? Cause the desk that you're sitting at right now says Kevin Martin.
Yeah, and I don't know if he logs in under that or city administrator.
Okay. And then how about George? Is he going in, in the room?
Yes, they're both in there with him.
Okay.
So can I log off of this one or will it mess things up?
Um, just leave that one as it is and I'm going to wait, um, and find out. Are you able to ask Kevin what, what log on he's using?
Yeah, let me go ask.
Thank you.
Mayor, do we have anyone there at City Hall that's planning on attending?
Yeah, I asked that just a couple of minutes ago and Kevin took George back.
Um, no, what I mean is if you're asking to close this screen for Kevin Martin, I'm wondering if we should leave it open for any public who may want to attend the budget meeting after our executive session.
Yeah, I'm not closing the meeting down. I'm just creating a breakout room for the executive session. So we'll all go back to the main room again.
Okay.
Okay, you guys should be able to join. I'm going to wait until I, oh, there we go. So go ahead and join the executive session. Thank you, Colleen. I got it figured out. He joined.
Okay.